Indivisible.
Thank you, Officer. Appreciate that. I'll now lead with a roll call vote. Trustee Saldivar is going to join us late. Trustee Wilson, thank you. Trustee Broussard is absent. Trustee Stoma.
Here.
He's online. Trustee Mesa.
Present.
Thank you, Trustee Mesa. Trustee Mario. Thank you, Trustee Mario. Trustee vote.
Hi.
Thank you, Trustee. This president, and I'm president, we have a forum. Chancellor Castillo, has the notice for this meeting been posted?
I certify that the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the law, Chairman.
Thank you, Chancellor. Ms. Barnett, has anyone signed up to offer public comment?
Yes, we have two public speakers today. First, we have Dr. John Bergdoff.
Hey, Dr. Bergdoff, will you step forward, please? In accordance with board policy, each speaker is allowed to speak for up to five minutes. There is a timer on the podium with lights. When the light turns red, your time has expired.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. I am Dr. John Bergdoff, President of the American Federation of Teachers at Lone Star College. I hope the room is, I hope the school year is off to a great start for everyone in the room this morning. Today, I'd like to briefly address two topics, one of them on today's agenda and one that is not. Action item five authorizes the chancellor to establish prevailing wage rates for fiscal year 2026 in accordance with the Department of Labor Davis Bacon Act. It has been Lone Star College's policy for a number of years now to require outside employers who contract with the college to pay their workers a fair living wage in accordance with prevailing wages for their respective crafts as set for the Houston area by the Department of Labor. This was a commitment the union asked chancellor head to consider some years ago, and we don't want to miss an opportunity to express our support and gratitude that this practice has become standard operating procedure at Lone Star. Adopting prevailing wages affirms the college's solidarity with all of our working brothers and sisters across the region, many of whom are our students or are parents of our students. We in the union believe that the One Lone Star principle includes committing to a livable wage for everyone associated with the college, whether they are employed directly by the college or by contractors who want to be associated with us. So although an action item like this now routinely appears on your agenda about this time of year, the AFT wants you to know that we appreciate this commitment and that we support this practice wholeheartedly. I want to shift gears to an upcoming prohibition from Austin in order to commend the board and the administration for wisely taking actions in the past that will reduce the negative impact on students and employees in the future. I am speaking of Senate Bill Eight, which has been passed by both houses of the legislature and awaits the governor's signature. This is the so-called bathroom bill, which requires transgender people to use the bathrooms and dressing rooms corresponding to their gender at birth. Violations will be accompanied by hefty fines to be paid not by the individuals involved, but by the college. I am both grateful and proud that Lone Star College made a conscious and proactive decision a few years ago that all new college buildings would include at least one gender-neutral, single-occupancy bathroom, and that as soon as practical, all existing buildings would be retrofitted to include at least one. In fact, if this effort is not already complete system-wide, I believe it is very close. These bathrooms provide a safe and dignified alternative for transgender students and employees, and also are a benefit to others, including parents who need to bring small children on campus and disabled persons who need assistance and have caregivers of a different gender. We need to be certain that the locations of these bathrooms are well-publicized. I know there are many strongly-held points of view related to this issue. What distresses me is that amidst all the debate, the humanity of real people gets forgotten. I served for many years as Chair of the Mathematics Department at LSC SciFair. During my tenure, we employed two transgender adjunct instructors, both of whom were talented, dedicated, and caring teachers. Every semester between the end of the pandemic and this past spring, I have had at least one transgender student in my classes every semester. This is not surprising since transgender persons make up about 1% of the population and faculty generally teach over 100 students per semester. All of these are real people here at our college in search of a better life and who have real basic needs. I wish we could shield them all from the ill-informed discrimination they endure, but I am grateful that Lone Star has made a commitment to welcome them and respect their dignity. Thank you so much for your kind consideration.
Thank you, Doctor. Ms. Barnett, would you call a second speaker by name, please?
Aleah Frank.
Ms. Frank, if you'll step up to the podium, please. I have to read this. The welcome. In accordance with board policy, each speaker is allowed to speak up to five minutes. There is a timer on the podium with lights. When the light turns red, your time has expired. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Aleah Frank, and I'm here to address a comment and some concerns that were filed back in 2024 of August in reference to the ATCP program here at Lone Star. After 11 years in education in Houston, three years of my daughter being enrolled in SciFair ISD locally, I was extremely excited and happy to be accepted into the ATCP program, my first ever, in May of 2022. And I started classes in August of 2022. In that moment, I knew my dream of being a certified teacher would come to pass. But upon interest, I noticed unfair placement. Even with a high enough GPA, I was advised and given directives to take exams that were not interest requirements based on my transcript GPAs and the program requirements. I was also not even able to effectively communicate with most of the random advisors without being displaced or sent to departments that had nothing to do with continuing education. I can remember one of the nine advisors within that timeframe would CC me or refer me to someone in the engineering department or the maintenance department when specifically asking questions in reference to educational resources. That alone was just one of the many concerns with the advising that I experienced while enrolled in this program. On August 6, 2024, I expressed frustrations about the communication exchange and the turnaround response between testing advisors. And instead of giving me one consistent advisor that specifically about this specific situation, it was escalated from a concerning email and a phone call around 8:30 AM that morning to four officers and an advocate detaining me at my apartment and issuing me a trespassing document when I was not even on campus that day. Even with all the complications and years in education, my ultimate goal is to remain in education and to finish my certification. Without addressing specific names or individuals, I am asking Lone Star to reactivate my account, have grace to move forward, understand that I held myself accountable the past year due to me losing my career after passing two of the required three certification exams, take TA's prior suggestion, and give me a consistent advisor. Allow me to finish complete my pursuit in being a certified teacher because I have not ever been diagnosed with anything besides being in the field of education. If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask me however I want to address that comment, and I thank you so much for your time.
Yes, ma'am. We're prohibited, excuse me, we're prohibited by law from responding to public speakers during this portion of the agenda, so thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Barnett, any other speakers?
We have no other public speakers.
Okay, thank you. Trustees will now move into the agenda. Further, item number six, approval of the minutes. Now time for approval of the minutes of the August 7, 2025 Budget Workshop Meeting and August 7, 2025 Regular Meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes? Have a motion by trustee Wilson. May I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by trustee Mesa? Is that right? Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll do a roll call vote. And let the record show that trustee Saldivar is here. We're going to call on her first to vote on this item. How do you vote on this item?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Wilson. Thank you. Trustee Broussard is absent. Trustee Stoma?
Abstain.
Abstain. Trustee Mesa?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Mario? Thank you. Trustee vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Kane?
Yes.
Thank you, and I vote yes. The item passes, and the minutes are approved. Special reports and announcements. Chancellor Castillo, do you have any special reports or announcements?
I do, Chairman. Thank you. I'm going to start with special reports of events. So we had the Fall 2025 Systemwide Convocation on August 19. We had a couple of trustees there, and a former trustee, I want to thank trustee Mesa and trustee Wilson were in attendance, and trustee Wilson actually delivered the remarks. Thank you, trustee Wilson. It was just a really nice event. As I mentioned sort of last month, we were going to pivot. The feedback has been overwhelmingly positive over the new direction of convocation. And so I want to just let the board know that we did have that event, and my all counsel is very successful, so thank you for the trust and the confidence in being able to pivot a longstanding event like that to be something completely different than what it's been for quite some time. As far as forthcoming events, Dr. Carlos Morales' welcome reception is September 8. Dr. Morales waved, so there.
I lost audio. I don't know if anybody else did, but I can't hear the chancellor.
I can't hear either.
Okay.
Can you hear? Can you hear me now, trustee Stoma?
Yes, sir. Go ahead. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Trustee vote confirming that you can hear me as well, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. So as I was saying, Dr. Carlos Morales' welcome reception is on September 8 in this very room from 3:00 to 4:00 PM. And so we would like to invite everyone here. It's open to all employees and also community members. We just want to welcome Dr. Morales officially on September 8. And so I do have a couple of recognitions, Chair. Want to start with Lieutenant Colonel David Yubra. If you'll come up here, Colonel. And by the way, he asked me to call him David. That will never happen. So Colonel Yubra served 24 years as a United States Army officer, deployed three years in combat during Operation Iraqi Freedom. He's been awarded four Bronze Star Medals and Allegiative Merit. He earned a bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering management from West Point, a master's in counseling and leader development from Long Island University. He's a graduate of the U.S. Army Command and General Staff College at Fort Leavenworth. He was named U.S. Army Cadet Command Professor of Military Science of the Year in 2011 out of 273 programs nationwide. He has directed emergency management at San Houston State University for five years between 2014 and 2019. Prior to joining us, he was the Division Director of Texas Department of Criminal Justice, launched Training and Leadership Development Division, implemented wellness and leadership initiatives, online training, and nationally-recognized programs such as a High Potential Employee Leadership Academy. And he's here, consistent with what I told the board last month, I know what I don't know. But we're hiring people that are the consummate experts in what it is that I don't know. And one of those things is veteran services, and who better than a decorated Army veteran to come help us build not just a place where all are welcome, but where it's built for veterans in mind. And so with that, Colonel, I'll yield the floor to you, sir.
Thank you, Chair Sullivan, trustees, Chancellor Castillo. Thank you very much for this incredible opportunity to serve, to serve our students, to serve our veterans, and support the wonderful family here at Lone Star. Just very grateful. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir, and welcome aboard on behalf of the trustees. Anybody have any comments other than welcome at this point? Welcome. Thank you.
Honored. Thank you, sir.
Chancellor. This is your time, but I would like to dovetail on what he said and to compliment the veterans team within the system for the social media presence they have. I see the LinkedIn post. I see the Facebook post. I see the photos. I see the wording, the comments. It's great, and they're doing a fabulous job with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the next, you remember that last month, we talked a little bit about the Life Math Program, trustee Wilson in particular, and there was mention of Dr. Jerome Davis. Where are you? Is it Coach Davis or Dr. Davis? Come on down. All right, when you get up here, you got to tell us what you prefer. All right, so let me tell you who Coach Davis is, also Dr. Davis. He serves as a job coach at Lone Star College Tomball, where he supports students' learning, including neurodiverse learners and overseas community internship programs. He's an accomplished professional with extensive experience in higher ed and K-12 administration. He actively contributes to student success as advisor for the Special Olympics Texas Unified Champion School Club and through participation in several leadership development cohorts. He's engaged in community service as a high school and college football crew chief and basketball crew chief referee. Honored, and he's honored to be selected, and that's the main reason why we brought you here. It's to personally congratulate you on being selected as head coach for Team Texas Unified Basketball at the 2026 Special Olympics USA Games in Minneapolis. And you earned a Doctor of Education in Higher Education with an emphasis in organizational leadership and a Master of Education in Secondary Education from Grand Canyon University. And so is it Dr. Davis or Coach Davis? Which one do you prefer?
Either one. It doesn't matter.
Okay, we'll go with, we'll go with Coach Davis. All right. So Coach Davis, I remember that when I told you that you were going to come here, you had a proposal for me, right?
Yes, sir.
And this is an open intern spring college, so I'm going to encourage you to repeat that proposal to me in front of the entire board because we do things out in the open here, so go ahead.
So when I talked to the chancellor at the convocation, I suggested that we started a Special Olympics Columbus Club at each one of the campuses.
Okay, and you also shared with me that apparently there's not that many of these programs in the area. Is that correct? So this would be pretty unique to have this many programs in one house?
Correct. We're only the second college in the state of Texas that has a Special Olympics club.
Okay, so what do you need from us to do the thing?
Just your support, and you're okay to do it.
You're, oh, you got the support. Let's do it. Anything from the, from the board?
Trustee Wilson?
Dr. Davis, you know I always joke with you. Because that costs money to host, right? So he asked, what did you need? So what you need to tell him? What you need?
We actually need some money to.
Okay, oh, thank you.
It's not my first year as chancellor anymore. I knew exactly what you meant. I'm still in, right? Just give me a figure. We need to support these students, okay? Yes, and thank you, trustee Wilson. I know it meant money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Coach. Appreciate it.
That's it, Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chancellor. We'll now move into cabinets, excuse me, chancellor's cabinet. Lone Star College, Montgomery President Reed Hart, please come to the podium for your presentation, ma'am.
Short here. This down a bit. Good morning, Chair Sullivan, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, and colleagues. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. It is an honor to reflect on Lone Star College's 53 years of service. Doesn't want to click.
There we go.
During the Fall 2025 Convocation, Chancellor Castillo released the new LSC logo. The star of tomorrow depicts the bridge that Lone Star College provides for our students to reach their goals. When I first saw this star, the starburst that you see bursting back there, to me, represented the thousands of students we have served over the past 53 years. Think there's a delay. Our story began on October 7, 1972, when voters approved the creation of North Harris County College. Aldine Spring and Umpire School Districts collectively formed our Community College District. Classes were initially offered in the local high schools with the administrative office being located at Aldine High School. In 1976, the college officially opened its first campus, serving approximately 600 students. In 1975, we awarded six credentials, three Associate of Art degrees, one Associate of Applied Science degree, and two Level One certificates. It was a modest beginning, but it established our vision of access and affordability. By 1995, that vision had taken root. Kingwood opened in 1985 as the east campus, serving approximately 1,000 students. Tomball opened in 1988 as the third campus with 1,750 students. Montgomery Campus opened in 1995 as the fourth campus, enrolling 32. And just a quick shout out, this is our 30th anniversary this year. Thank you. Each expansion meant new communities gaining access to higher education close to home. By the end of the 1995 academic year, Lone Star College awarded 6,071 credentials. By 2010, Lone Star had become a large multi-campus system, adding SciFair in 2003, serving 5,800 students between the main campus and Fairbanks Center. University Park initially opened as a center in 2010, serving over 6,000 students and eventually evolved into the sixth Lone Star campus in 2012. By the end of the academic year 2010, Lone Star awarded nearly 46,000 credentials. Key milestones include the launch of the Academy for Lifelong Learning in 2000 and a growing share of Texas Associate Degree completers making up about 0.5% to 1.8% each year. We were no longer just growing. We were shaping education across the state. By 2022, LSC had grown exponentially, adding Houston North in fall of 2019 with three locations, Fairbanks, Greenpoint, and Victory, adding the addition of Fallbrook in 2020. The eighth and final campus online opened in fall '22, serving over 3,600 students. From 2010 through the early 2020s, Level One certificates grew rapidly, surpassing 2,000 annually and making Lone Star a major contributor to Texas's short-term credentialing pipeline. In fall of 2020, we also began offering our bachelor degrees. Most impressively, in academic year 2020, LSC awarded 157,398 credentials. Today, 53 years later, we are now serving 94,000 students. But let me correct myself because I did this PowerPoint last week. As of this morning, September 4, Lone Star enrollment stands at 96,822 students. But as our chancellor likes to remind us, it is beyond the enrollment numbers. Lone Star College is focused on improving student outcomes. Whether it is faculty-winning national awards in math and science, hosting regional biotech conferences, being awarded national and state grants, preparing students to earn prestigious scholarships, providing them with professional development opportunities, or simply helping them prepare to kick the butts of seniors from Rice, A&amp;M, and UT in a NASA competition, Lone Star College is a bridge for opportunity. As of August 27, 2005, Lone Star has awarded 184,091 credentials, each representing a changed life and a stronger community for which we serve. Nationally, community colleges graduate 1,000 to 2,000 students per year. At that rate, Lone Star's total equivalent of equals 90 to 180 years of graduation, underscoring our extraordinary scale. As of 2024, a study by the Community College Research Center and Aspen Institute found only 45% of community college students earn a bachelor's degree upon transferring. Lone Star College completes at a 48.5% rate, more than 3% higher than the state average. We know students succeed when basic needs are met, and they are supported both inside and outside the classroom. This is why Lone Star will continue to ensure we are holistically meeting the needs of our students and the community we serve. Our Academy for Lifelong Learners now has over 2,000 members, showing that education is truly a lifelong pursuit. LSC remains committed to ensuring faculty and staff are appropriately trained, recently introducing various initiatives such as I Want to Be A, faculty and advisor investments, and expanded trainings through organizational development. Across the system, we've expanded food pantry and voucher programs to reduce barriers and support persistence and completion. None of this happens without the support of our community. The foundation and donors, we continue to seek in our awarded grants, scholarships, and endowments, many from former students or industry partners. At Lone Star, we are here to remove barriers, financial, geographic, social, and/or mental. We hire experts and seek opportunities to provide appropriate resources to all of our students. Beyond academics, Lone Star serves as an institution strengthening our community. Via partnerships, practices, or clinicals, our students are prepared. Our story is still unfolding. The next chapter will expand access, deepen partnerships, increase retention and completion, and drive innovation. Together, moving forward as one LSC, we will continue to provide a bridge that allows students to not only touch the stars, but to surpass them in the pursuits of their greatest goals. As we celebrate 53 years, we honor our past and look boldly at the future. On behalf of the students, faculty, staff, and administration, we would like to thank our board for your leadership and your support. Together, we will make the next 53 years just as impactful as the first. Thank you.
Dr. Reed Hart, thank you for reminding us how far we've come because it's extraordinary, and I know that the future is limitless for all of us. Chancellor, do you have any follow-up comments?
No, just good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, any questions or comments? Once again, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move to next agenda item, which is faculty representative, and I'm going to ask the chancellor to tell us about the change in this description on the agenda, and then we'll call up Professor Davis.
Yes, sir. So this is a, it used to say faculty senate presidents. Obviously, now in the last legislative session, there was a change under SB 37 that essentially rewrote, maybe wrote for the first time, the requirements of what is required by law to have a faculty senate. And in the interim, part of what the law says is that faculty senate activities have to be suspended while you essentially build a program that complies with the law. And so like, like most things, we're going to comply with the law. And but what I wanted to make clear, and thank you, Chairman, is that I am very much publicly committing to working with our faculty. Notwithstanding SB 37, we still believe in shared governance at this institution. We still believe in academic freedom, and we still believe that faculty deserve a voice at the table and to be equal partners in finding solutions. And so over the course of the next few months, the eight former faculty senate presidents and I are going to meet and discuss drafts and work collaboratively in a shared governance model to produce something I think that we can all agree on, even if we're not all happy with it, we'll all at least reach a consensus. And I also wanted to publicly thank the faculty and the faculty senate presidents for, many of them interrupted their summers to have meetings about SB 37 over the summer. And so I'm very grateful for that as well because I know that a lot of you could have waited until August or September to work on that. And so, I'm very grateful for that as well, because I know that a lot of you could have waited until August or September to work on that. And again, you have my public commitment to continue to work with the faculty, because you guys are the reason that we are here, and you guys do the thing closest to the students. And so, I'm grateful for that, and I will show my gratitude by always including the faculty in the decisions at this institution, notwithstanding SB thirty-seven. With that.
Thank you, Chancellor. Professor Davis, please introduce yourself.
Thanks. My name is Chris Davis. I teach history at LSC Online. I am the faculty rep for LSC Online, and I have led two study abroad trips with LSC. And so, what I want to present to the board today is first, an overview of Lone Star College Study Abroad, the impact it has on our students, the attraction it has for our students, and then highlight some of the trips and faculty involvement with study abroad. Just a quick note, every picture you're going to see here in these slides are real photos from study abroad trips with faculty and students. These are not stock photos. This first is a map highlighting the scope and range that we have over the years at LSC, taking students, this is representing over five continents that we have taken our students to be able to experience the world. We're possibly working on a sixth in Australia, but you can see from Europe to South America, and especially more recently, Asia, North Africa. We are sending our students out into the world, and our students are bringing the world back home to LSC. I think this matters, study abroad for our students, for so many of them. For many, it's their first experience outside the country. And for many, it might be their only experience outside the country. For some of them, it's their first experience outside the state, their first trip on an airplane, on a train. So we are really opening up a global and international experience for so many of our students, especially those who don't have the opportunity and the means to be able to experience something like this, like so many other students in this country at other institutions. And the support that we get from Lone Star, from the board, from the chancellor, honors international education is really facilitating that. As you can see, I've got some statistics here. The attractiveness of study abroad for students is a major recruiting draw to come to college. It's a major draw for staying in college. And I think Lone Star Study Abroad signals not only to our students, but to the state and to the nation that study abroad belongs at community colleges, that it is possible. Here we can see the number of awards our students have won. We've had over thirteen Gilman Scholarships, helping to fund our students to be able to go on these trips. They are helped by honors and international education to be able to apply for this. And the faculty trip leaders, we have five students selected for the case program in Tunisia. We have major scholarships from education abroad, and Lone Star is recognized as a top ten sender with, through the Institute of International Education. Financial support. Our students also receive support from LSC employees and staff through the Foundation's Study Abroad Scholarship Endowment, application support, info sessions that are going on almost year-round. We have partnerships with other institutions around the world for cost sharing. We have travel co-ops and any number of avenues to help support our students. If you'll just take a look here, I mean, we have Ireland, Japan, Morocco, South Korea. We have virtual exchanges, so it's not just students getting on a plane, taking a course, and going to another country. We have multiple versions of what we consider study abroad, right? We have specialized programs, we have New York City Global Leadership Institute, homegrown exchanges. A lot of this is supported on the faculty side by our Faculty International Exploration Awards, FIE, for short, where we give faculty the opportunity, a small stipend, to be able to travel, internationalize their courses, plan for study abroad proposals. In fact, we have, if you look in the picture down at the bottom, that's Oswaldo Caballero. He is one of my workforce colleagues, right? Who was able to get a FIE award to Australia and possibly develop a program for study abroad through workforce to take students to Australia. Global workforce wins, I mean, thirty million, thirty-one million job postings require study abroad skills. Eighty-nine percent of students develop twenty-first century skills through international experience. These are skills that our students need, these are skills that our students value, and these are skills that our community's employers value. So this is a kind of list of some of the programs we've done recently. And what I'd like you to take a look at is the type of courses that we're offering. It's not just history courses and humanities courses, of which I teach, and we do have. But if you notice, we have physical education courses, chemistry, accounting, government, right? And these faculty who take these students come from across the campuses, right? I, I worked with a colleague at Kingwood, developing a program that we've done to Spain and Portugal, SciFair, LSC Online. So it's a great opportunity for faculty to come together from across the campuses, work collaboratively. And of course, our students are coming from all over the district, getting to know one another, getting to know one another's programs, getting to experience working with different professors. So, one of the great things on the faculty side is getting to work with other faculty and getting to work with students I might not otherwise get to work with. We've got some quotes from an article that was recently published. This is Steve Davis, a history professor at Kingwood College that I work with, that I've known a long time. We are in Tangier at the American Legation, having a class in the American Legation in Tangier. And you can imagine what that's like for students, right? To be walking through the streets of a beautiful city in Morocco, sit in for a class, have a guest speaker, have a tour. That is real education. That is experiential education. We have had trips to the Philippines. I'm going to run through these, mostly just the pictures and the highlights that we can see. And of course, you can see, it's, it's not just about the, the text learned, the concepts and ideas. It's experiencing food, culture, meeting other people. Study Abroad Japan, this has been a very popular one recently. We have students on wait lists to get into these programs. I wish we could take more and more and have more. Morocco, and of course, we're taking Lone Star out into the world. You see the banner. We like to do that with our trips. Sharing this from a student, Teresa Barbie. This was from our stop in Madrid on our study abroad to Spain and Portugal. This is Pablo Picasso's Guernica at the Museo Rey de Sofia in Madrid, famous painting that we all study. Seeing Pablo Picasso original in person at the museum was a dream come true. What energized the experience was learning about the inspiration that compelled Picasso to create Guernica in nineteen thirty-seven, an anti-war emotionally moving and timeless piece. Imagine that, right? Instead of sitting in my classroom and looking at a PowerPoint slide, to actually go and see it, and to make that happen through especially the funding and support of Lone Star College. Another student, Alejandro, talking about actually seeing the Tomb of Christopher Columbus, and what an amazing experience that was for him. Ireland, we had a great trip to Ireland, themed on mythology, magic, and culture. They traveled to rural areas, city areas, museums, again, guest speakers. This is one we're really proud of, South Korea, led by Jay Tice from Kingwood and his colleagues. They were there from June eighteen to August first. First two weeks, our students were teaching English to Korean students, right? In classes for two weeks, they earned a thousand dollars doing that. The next four weeks, they sat in courses, on any number of courses with other international students, and spent over a month in Korea and had a profound and transformative experience. Professor Shuang Zhu, leading a study abroad program transformed not only my students' worldview, but also my own approach to teaching. And I think that's important from the faculty side, reminding me that education thrives where curiosity meets culture and that the most powerful lessons often happen far beyond the classroom. You know, I've had students who have changed their major, having been on a study abroad trip. It can have a profound, profound impact. In closing, I just want to thank everyone at honors and international education. The support they give us is beyond words. But I also want to thank the chancellor for his support and the board for your support for study abroad programs, particularly study abroad awards that we're able to give our students, you know, without which there's really no equitable way for many of these students to be able to see the world and experience what they do in study abroad. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Professor Davis. I have a question, but I always like to ask my colleagues first. Any questions? Yes, if I may, Dr. Kane? Yes, sir.
That's a very impressive program. Thank you so much for sharing that with us, and you may have touched on this, and I just missed it, but how are the students chosen, or do they opt in? And then about how many students per academic year are in this program, take advantage of the opportunity to travel?
Typically, we run about four programs of just this straight study abroad trips. It can be three or four. The number of students might be fourteen to twenty-two with two or three faculty members. The selection process is rigorous in terms of, and each trip has its own criteria, but we, it's, it's an open process. Every student is eligible. There's typically a minimum grade point average. There's typically a letter of intent or some type of essay writing explaining why they want to go. And we, you know, I can speak for myself, we try to select from a broad range of students, some who might have some travel experience that could be beneficial on the trip, but especially those who don't have the experience and for whom this would be their, their first time. We select from different majors, different campuses, and we have any number of criteria that we use to try to select the best group that we can. That's an even distribution in any number of categories, and we do our best, but we have wait lists. You know, unfortunately, and it's always unfortunate to tell students they can't go that might otherwise be eligible and needing and wanting to. So the more we can expand this program, to the extent it's possible, we can serve even more students.
Thank you. Trustee Salabart.
Thank you, Chairman. I, you know, when you mentioned studying abroad, I truly, you know, support these types of programs, and I'm glad that Lone Star has them, because I benefited from that when I was in, in, at the university. It was my first experience actually traveling outside of the states, and it does really change you. It gives you a, you know, new perspective on people's cultures, the government, social, everything. And so, you know, it kind of lets you to kind of think we're not the only ones, right? And so, because of that, I haven't stopped traveling, so that is very, very true. And obviously, our university was a little bit different, but we just, they're very expensive, those programs. But we had scholarships for that. But you would think as a student, because that's what I thought, oh, I'm just going to be sightseeing everywhere, it's going to be this and that. Well, no. It's really not. Yes, you can sightsee, right? Because it goes with the program, but it's, it's a very hard and sort of difficult, right? If you would like to talk more about that, but it's, it's, you get so addicted to that, that once you do one program, you just want to continue to do that. So thank you for offering that, Chancellor. I truly do believe that, you know, if we could, we'd expand the program, because it's life-changing to a student. It really is.
Thank you. Did you have, you had a question? Did you ask if we could do more? Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, just based on, on what you were saying, yes, I do think it's not just the museums and the trips, and the sightseeing. It's, it's also the camaraderie that these students develop between one another. It's the small things, the spaces in between, trying something new and encounter that they might have. Riding a train, riding public transportation, having a conversation with somebody else that might open their mind and open the minds of others. And I think it's important, as you illustrate, it's not just sending them out, it's them coming back for our campuses, for our college, for their colleagues, or their employers, their churches, their communities, bringing that experience and making our community that's in the community college that much richer.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Salabart. Did you have a comment, sir?
I do. Thank you, Chairman. So let me start with this. Can you talk a little bit more about the faculty experience? Because if you could just back a few pictures, I get stressed out at the idea of the faculty member being responsible for that many humans in a different country like that, right? Like, that stresses me out, just like looking at them, being like.
It stresses me out.
Okay. I, I can't imagine being responsible for that many humans in a different country, because I get lost on my, by myself, right? And so, can you talk a little bit about that? Like, what is the stress level like in being accountable for that many other humans?
It's stressful. I can assure you that, but you know, at honors international education, we have trainings in place throughout the year. We have expectations, we have trainings with students, we have contracts about behavior. Of course, not all these are adults. Nobody goes who's not over eighteen, but it is impressed upon them that they have funding from Lone Star. They are representatives of this college. We select based on the kinds of, of students and people we think can handle this. And we meet with the students well in advance, right? And, you know, one of the things we, we talked to them about is, don't ruin this for the next group, right? And I think they understand and appreciate that. And we do have parameters and limits, realizing that these are adults. But they're taking a course, they're paying tuition for it. Many of them are getting funding, and I think for the most part, it gets through. It doesn't mean that there aren't little missteps along the way. But it's, and most of the students, yes. But there is that bonding experience that we are in it for each other. We pick each other up. Those who have maybe stronger language skills help, help faculty, help the other students. Some who maybe had more experience traveling can help those, but there's, there's culture shock. There's, you know, the new, you know, especially in, in some of these countries that are far-flung across the world. And it's an experience, it's an experience for faculty. And yes, it is stressful, but, you know, I also appreciate the fact that I'm a representative, and I can speak for the rest of the faculty of Lone Star. And I am a steward of Lone Star and the students. And, you know, I think after the first few days, most of these groups and trips realize we are in this together, even though there's an individual experience and award, we are doing it collectively. We're learning, we're growing, and we are bringing this back home, so.
And the last thing I just want to say, Chairman, thank you, Professor, is I am an incredible supporter of world travel. I'll be quite honest with you. I personally, as a human, don't like to travel, because the reasons I just highlighted, I get nervous. But I'm a big supporter of it, because I think that in order to offer a world-class education, we have to travel the world, right? There are certain things that we can read about, we can watch videos about, but there are certain things that have to be experienced. And art is a good example of that, right? You can see a picture of a piece of art, but when you're standing before it, the very canvas that the artist sort of stroked, there's a different feeling in an education, an education part of it, right? You can read about architecture, and you can read about angles and that, and there's another thing to sit in the presence of a great cathedral or a monument that was made by humans, and there's an educational aspect of that that can't be replicated in any other way but international travel. So I'm a huge supporter of that, because I think that we do offer a world-class education here at Lone Star, and part of that is offering world-class opportunities to the students. So that's all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. And Professor Davis, before you leave, I had two questions. I think I heard you say you wish you could take more students.
Yes.
So I wrote down, note to myself, what are the limitations and what are the barriers?
Well, on a particular trip, it would be hard to take such a large group with flights and logistics. But opening up to more programs, being able to go, currently, we do three or four a year, and that's just for these main study abroad programs. As I highlighted in some of these slides, we have shorter-term programs for sure, but support, as was mentioned in the, one of the previous speakers.
All right. And then my second question.
It implies support, yes, and recruiting, recruiting, recruiting students, making students aware. Yeah.
Okay. Second question. Sorry. Is there a difference on these trips and with study abroad? Is there a difference between community college participation and others?
I, I don't think so. I'm not quite sure in terms of the kinds of trips we do at Lone Star. I don't believe are different, other than being better. You know, ours are, for the most part, curated in-house. They're the ones that Steve Davis and I led. We helped book the flights, we helped do the logistics. We do have some others with partnerships that are ready-made, that we can segue into, and those are. ready-made that we can segue into, and those are valuable too. And that helps us, you know, at scale. But I, I think recruiting, and most of the other study abroad programs at big universities, they get students from all over the country. You know, University of Texas is study abroad. You've got students from New York and at other institutions because it's, yes, there's something noble about it, but it's possibly a moneymaker. Ours isn't to make money. Ours is to focus on students and give them the best experience possible. And we work hard to keep those costs down, but also make it safe, rewarding, enjoyable. And it's a kind of a homegrown here at the community college. But in, but in terms of the courses they're taking and experiences they have, I challenge any other study abroad program from Harvard to University of Texas to match the experience we give our students.
Good. Professor, that's a good way to end your presentation. And thank you. Appreciate it.
Look forward to having you back.
More members will now proceed into the agenda and the agenda calls for two items. One, special reports or announcements, and then two committee reports. So let's go with special reports or announcements. I'll look down to my left. Trustee Maria. Okay, thank you, Trustee Kane. Thank you, Trustee Mesa.
This is more of a comment versus a report. I was able to attend the Houston Mariachi Festival along with Trustee Murillo and Trustee Saldivar. I was able to take my parents, who, they actually don't get out too often. And so it was, is really rewarding to see them experience that. I was commenting to Ms. Mariangela earlier this morning about the experience. And Trustee Murillo, and I think Trustee Saldivar, both y'all had been before. And so for me, this was my first time attending anything like this. I also frequent the Houston Film Festival, which I highly recommend. It's in March. And I, I'm pretty sure I'm going to be a regular, you know, with Lone Star or otherwise, but I'm definitely going to invite more people to the Mariachi Festival. It was a really rewarding experience. We had the best seats that you could ask for, and we were proud to represent Lone Star there. And just a really great program. A lot of the performers with the Mariachi group, I believe they're called Siete Leguas. And a lot of them are actually teachers. They're all instructors, many of them down from the valley and actually a friend, they're friends of a friend. And so it was a really good experience. They did an amazing show, very rich culturally. And me personally, I'm not of Mexican heritage, but I got to learn a lot of the Mexican heritage and the culture. And it was beautiful to see that and experience that and also with my parents. My mother, I just got her enrolled into the, into the Academy for Lifelong Learning Program. She attended a Tai Chi class just this week, and she really enjoyed it. She got lost on campus, but she said that someone, someone was a friendly face helped her out and she learned a little bit about Tai Chi. And so she's, I think, attending a field trip and doing some other classes. So I'm really grateful for the college to offer that program. And the other day I was running at, at the track of my local middle school and I ran into someone and I told him about this program. And so I'm hopeful that we can get more people enrolled in that. And then the last thing I want to say is, I didn't get to mention this last month, but I attended a play at North Terrace. And I think some of the other presidents may have attended the same play and vice chancellors as well, the Barbecue Apocalypse. Did y'all attend that? Yes, no? No, y'all missed out. The Barbecue Apocalypse is a great play. It's, it's really cool. And it's very tongue-in-cheek and has a good feel-good story at the end. And so I planned to attend more plays and I encourage others to attend plays at our campuses. They're extremely well-done, extremely impressive. And they led us toward the set afterwards. So that was awesome. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Trustee Mesa. Trustee Saldivar. Thank you, Trustee Wilson.
Thank you. Like El Chancellor said, I was able to speak at the convocation. And if you didn't go because it was voluntary, you missed a treat. The Chancellor, y'all did a really good job in changing it and making it more about the people that are here at Lone Star and debuting, which it debuted. I don't know if everybody know, did they know? Chancellor? Okay. Well, the things that he did at the convocation, but it was really awesome. And you did a great job.
Thank you, Trustee Wilson. Let me go to our virtual participants. Trustee Stoma, any comments?
No comments.
Thank you, Trustee Vote. Any comments?
Good work in the international travel. Yeah, it's great. I fully support all, all that we're doing out there. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Trustee Vote. I have one report. Lone Star College Foundation report. The Chair of Lone Star College System Board of Trustees has an ex officio seat on the Foundation Board. So I attend their board meetings when I'm able. The board hosted a retreat this month, which I did attend and was able to meet their new officers and directors. I'd like to thank and congratulate the new Foundation Board Officers that started their new term this week. Miranda Hademec with Caldwell Companies as Board Chair. Alim Aditya with Johnson Controls, Vice Chair. Trent Eckel with Frost Bank, Treasurer. Pamela Hernandez with Educo Research, Secretary. James Harrison with Harrison Cronberg Architects, Past Chair. Three new board members were also appointed. Jenna Taylor, Brian Garcia, Ron Dejada. And also like to give a special thank you to the Chesmar Foundation, who funded two hundred nursing scholarships this year, bringing their scholarship total over the past three years at Lone Star College Foundation to nearly three hundred full nursing scholarships funded. Thank you. Okay, now we'll do reverse order on committee reports. And I'll actually use our committee chart. I'm going to do Audit and Finance last. Policy Review Committee, Trustee Saldivar.
Thank you, Chairman. I do have a report for the, for my colleagues and those here. The Policy Review Committee consists of myself, Trustee Mesa, Trustee Kane, Trustee Broussard. The Policy Review Committee met on August twenty-fifth and September second to review several proposed policy changes. Because of when the meeting agenda had to be posted, you will see only two proposed changes in today's agenda. Specifically, proposed revisions to the system's mission and vision statement as action item twenty-one and action item twenty-two. We will have more proposed policy revisions at the October board meeting. That would include items that we discussed with Board Counsel regarding some proposed policy changes to board processes. Again, those changes will be presented at the October board meeting. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Trustee Saldivar. Next committee is Chancellor Goals and Evaluation. Trustee Maria.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Sullivan. Recognizing that committee provides a voice in the development of poor policy and procedures, Chair Sullivan has, has asked committees to decide when committee plans to meet and procedures we plan to address. This helps us in making sure we plan accordingly and evaluate priorities, communicating with the Chancellor, of course, and preparing for future agenda items. Board Counsel, our Board Counsel, thank you, Philip, helped us kind of modify or create a committee, the committee charge. The, the Goals and Evaluations Committee charges, in general, just make recommendations to the full board regarding evaluation of the Chancellor's progress towards meeting goals established by board and Chancellor and revisions to the Chancellor's contract. And so this, thanks to very hard-working group of committee members, we, we were able to come up and with, with an improved evaluation process, perfected what we had created last year. And among those changes that are recommended, that will recommend it, it's only a couple, but our committee will, will meet this month. And call session will be discussing the schedule, the proposed board retreat or meeting. We haven't really decided what we're going to call it, which is part of, it's the first step of the process where the Chancellor will present his goals to us. But the committee will, will, will need to kind of prepare for that. And we will give a report on that at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Maria. Grievance Committee, Trustee Wilson. Okay, thank you. Committee on Committees, Trustee Kane?
No report.
Thank you. Community Engagement Committee, Trustee Mesa?
No updates at this moment.
Thank you. Technology Committee, Trustee Stoma?
No updates.
Thank you. And Audit and Finance, just a quick note that Ms. Barnett is going to coordinate a meeting date within the next couple of weeks for some important business. So the Audit Committee, of course, is myself, Trustee Kane, and Trustee Saldivar. So please be on the lookout for, for an email from Ms. Barnett. She'll schedule it for our convenience. Thank you very much. We'll now move to consideration of the consent agenda. Consideration, are there any items to be pulled for discussion and separate consideration? Now, I'll start on my right. Trustee Wilson. Okay, thank you. Trustee Saldivar. Thank you. Trustee Mesa. Thank you. Trustee Kane. Thank you. Trustee Maria. Thank you. Trustee Stoma?
No.
Thank you, Trustee Vote?
No.
Well, I hate to break the pattern, but I have one item and I'm going to pull item seventeen, but it's for a very positive comment. So the following items have been removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration, item seventeen. May I have a motion to approve items, let me, just for the record, read this out real quick. Items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Motion by Trustee Wilson. May I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Trustee Kane. Thank you. And is there any discussion? No discussions. I have a motion and a second. I'll do a roll call vote on the items as called. Trustee Saldivar? Thank you, Trustee Wilson. Thank you, Trustee Broussard's absent. Trustee Stoma?
Aye.
Thank you, Trustee Mesa. Thank you, Trustee Maria. Thank you, Trustee Vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Trustee Kane. Thank you. And I vote aye as well. The item passes and we'll now call item seventeen. May I have a motion for item seventeen? Trustee Wilson makes a motion. May I have a second? Trustee Saldivar, second. And if Dr. Vian could come up just real quick. Sorry to bring you up, but I think it's worth noting. Thank you. Item seventeen has to do with the special fund that was created for repair and replacement. And this, I think, might be the first expenditure under that firm, under that new fund. Could you kind of walk us through that real quick so that we could say that the board decided to do something, the administration carried it out, and now we're at the point of seeing the, the work?
Yes, sir. So it's actually been a work in progress over the last two fiscal years. A lot of collaboration between EBC Johnson and our teams to continue to expand not only the R and R program, but what we affectionately refer to as the R and M program. And so what we've did with the support of the Chancellor and the board is continue to look at ways to increase that. So we've not only increased the R and R fund from ten point five to fourteen point five million over the last two budget years to continue to work on our outdated or aging, maybe a better term, facilities. But EBC Johnson's team has worked very diligently to allocate funding for other improvements that are not covered under the R and R statute. So those are additional items such as carpet, paint, signage, things like that, that are in need of repair. And so through those collaborations, we have continued to support those programs and continue to support the campuses and the division on those facilities. So.
Good. Thank you very much. Any comments or thoughts, Chancellor? Okay, good. Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote on the item. Well, let me say, any further questions? Seeing now we'll do roll call vote. Trustee Saldivar. Thank you, Trustee Wilson. Thank you, Trustee Broussard is absent. Trustee Stoma?
Aye.
Thank you, Trustee Mesa. Thank you, Trustee Maria. Thank you, Trustee Vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Trustee Kane. Thank you. And I vote item, aye as well. The item passes. We'll now move to the financial report. Dr. Vian.
Yes, I felt like I just should say here, sir.
Thank you.
All right. So, and I did make several notes from the presentation earlier. So yes, I was paying attention and I have my stickies for all the other items. So. So when we're looking at the financials, just a reminder of the board that this is the closeout of eleven out of our twelve-month physical cycle. Right now, we've actually moved into physical year twenty-six. So the teams are operating, closing out FY twenty-five, opening FY twenty-six, and then already planning for FY twenty-seven. So it is always a challenging and unique opportunity for the system. So as we're looking at ideas, we are talking about at this point for the financials through July thirty-first, but want to go over any highlights for you all so you have that information. So as I alluded to last month, state appropriations are triggered under a three-pay. The state was off this year and we did not receive the state appropriations in the targeted month of June. So as I indicated last month, those financials were down and showed a distribution. The good news is the state did, the check, you know, was in the mail, as you say, and it was received and has been reconciled. And so we did receive that final payment. And so now all state appropriations were received to the tune of a hundred and fourteen million dollars, putting that back in line with expectations. I do want to note here, and I will also part, point it out later on in the financials, that miscellaneous revenues continue to track under, and that is directly related to fast funding. I have mentioned that to the board several times. As of last month, we had not received any of the fast funding for fall or spring semesters. We did, in fact, on eight twenty-seven, receive the fall payment of two point eight million dollars. That would not be reflected here since it is in closeout. But I did want to highlight that miscellaneous revenues were down strictly related to fast funding. However, those payments do, are, are starting to trickle in. But it would be until mid-September until we actually received everything that was due for FY twenty-five. So just wanted to highlight that. I know there's lots of questions and conversations about fast fundings and state appropriations. So wanted to highlight those two items for you. When we look at expenditures, you can see that most of all the expenditures are in line with where we have tracked this time last year. You can see an increase in salaries year over year. The biggest testament to that is a continued increase in compensation packages that we've looked at, as well as we were representing the across-the-board raises that were given, as well as four percent increases. So a lot of those additional items are starting to track and show up this time of year. So you can see that year over year, we've had an increase in salaries over this time last year, but well in tune with what was expected. So when we're looking at year-to-date financials for July thirty-first, you can see here, again, always a positive note when the charts exceed what was budgeted. So we budgeted five hundred and thirteen million. And as of the last day in July, we are at a hundred and four percent, approximately a hundred and three point eight percent of what we budgeted for revenues. So we're actually going to exceed budgeted revenues for this year. And again, not in taking any income that would still be received in August, which will be reported next month. We continue to track well below budgeted expenditures at the tune of seventy-eight point two percent. So again, around twenty-two percent of budget authority remains in month eleven of twelve. So continue to, to indicate that. When we're looking at the financial statement, again, as I've alluded to, you can see a total variance represented here in the forecasted budget. And that is exactly what I just described. We anticipate receiving twenty-six million dollars more than what was budgeted this FY twenty-five year. So it's always a good, good concept to have more money than you expected, but we want to work on trying to get that as close to actuals as we can. And again, as you can see, the breakdown of where those revenue sources are in the financial statement. So when you're looking at expenditures for this financial, financial statement, we actually have no significant variances to report to the board at this time. Looking at the additional information and financial documents that are in the board's packet, you will have your copy of your balance sheet, the statement of revenues and expenditures, our Fund Thirty-Five Harvey, which we've received no funding since the last report at this time, as well as the summary of invested funds. Again, as you're looking at closeout of FY twenty-five, we still have an anticipated cash reserve of a hundred and sixty-nine million based on the definition of cash reserves. And again, we will start to show that change as we move in and start recognizing FY twenty-six numbers based on year-end. So any of those variances or unbudgeted items would potentially roll into reserves and increase this chart for next time. So. Happy to anticipate or answer any questions that the board or Chancellor may have at this time.
Good. Thank you. Let me poll the board. Any questions? Trustee Maria, Trustee Kane, Trustee Mesa, Trustee Saldivar? Trustee Murillo, Trustee Kane, Trustee Mesa, Trustee Saldivar, Trustee Wilson. Any questions? Thank you. Trustee Stoma, any questions?
No.
Thank you, Trustee Vot. Any questions?
No.
Thank you, Dr. Bian. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Board of Trustees, in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, will move into closed session under one or more of the following provisions. Sections 551.071, Section 551.072, Section 551.074, and Section 551, excuse me, .076 will now move into closed session at a time as 11:41 a.m. Thank you. Thank you. I reconvene this board meeting at 1:37 p.m. Are there any suggested future agenda items? Seeing none, with no further business to discuss, this board meeting is now adjourned at 1:37 p.m. Thank you.